For anyone to read, could we now take a moment of silence and the Pledge of Legions after that?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could we now have a roll call?
Coy.
Here.
Langy.
Here.
Merrill.
Here.
Faust.
Oh, sorry. Here.
Oh, sorry. Muren.
Here.
Foning.
Here.
Faust.
Here.
File.
Here.
How fast that goes to your heads. Okay, could I have a motion for the approval of the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative.
Now, could I have a motion for the full agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative.
All right, now we'll move into special presentations, and I have just a couple of proclamations to read. We've already done them Mr. Oktoberfest, so bypass that. The first one is, "A Habitat for Humanity is a strong advocate for universal descent housing and is working to help local families who need a decent, affordable place to live, and adequate and whereas adequate housing is vitally important to the health of the world's economic communities and populations, and whereas safe homes and neighborhoods help to build social stability and security. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Dave Faust, President of the City Council of Norfolk, Nebraska hereby proclaim Monday, October 7th, 2013 as World Habitat Day, and the city of Norfolk, Nebraska, and their citizens to join the Norfolk area Habitat for Humanity and efforts to transform lives and the community." And there's somebody here to receive this, Donna?
Thank you to the council and the mayor for all the support that we get Habitat, and this is really UN World Habitat Day, and UN is working for improving housing all around the world. And I think there are about 80 countries involved in that, and I had to check because I didn't know the numbers, but it's 1,485 Habitat affiliates around the world, even though we only build 10 percent of the homes worldwide in the U.S. There are lots of people involved, and we thank you for taking this time to do this.
Thank you. It is a very good cause, Donna, so.
We thank you.
All right, the second proclamation is Extra Mile Day, whereas the city of Norfolk, Nebraska is a community that acknowledges that a special vibrancy exists within the entire community when individual citizens collectively go the extra mile in personal effort, volunteerism, and service, and whereas the city of Norfolk, Nebraska acknowledges the mission of the Extra Mile America Foundation to create 200 extra-mile cities and states in America and is proud to support the Extra Mile Day on November 1st, 2013. Now therefore, I be it resolved that I, Dave Faust, Council President of the city of Norfolk, Nebraska, do hereby proclaim November 1st, 2013 as Extra Mile Day, and the city of Norfolk, Nebraska, and urge each individual in our community to take time on this day to go the extra mile in his or her life and to also acknowledge all those around who are inspirational in their efforts and commitment to make their organizations, families, community, country, or world a better place." And is there anybody here to accept that? All right, we'll move on to the next one. Whereas proclamation for Catholic Daughter of the Americas Day, whereas Catholic Daughters of the Americas seek to do God's will and to fulfill their mission statement by living lives of service, and whereas Catholic Daughters serve the people of their communities by providing food and clothing and support to be undeserved and marginalized, and whereas I am the vine, you are the branches, is the chosen theme of the CDA Sunday Celebration, and whereas Sunday, October 20th, 2013, has been designated by the National Board of Catholic Daughters of the Americas as Catholic Daughter Sunday, now therefore I, Dave Faust, Council President of the city of Norfolk, Nebraska, hereby proclaim Sunday, October 20th, 2013, as Catholic Daughter of the Americas Day, and encourage all citizens to take this opportunity to acknowledge the efforts of Catholic Daughters. Is there anyone here to accept this? The next one is proclamation for Northeast Community College's 40th anniversary. Well, whereas Northeast Community College is celebrating 40 years of excellence in educational opportunities and workforce training, having educated thousands of students over the past four decades, and whereas established in 1973 as a comprehensive community, college offering vocational, technical, liberal arts, college transfer, and continuing education, Northeast Community College is a two-year public college that serves 101 communities, 60 high schools, and rural areas of a 20-county region, and whereas the college partners with local and area business and industry in providing job training and workforce development skills for Norfolk and the region, and now therefore be it resolved that I, Dave Faust, Council President of the city of Norfolk, Nebraska, by the power vested in me, do hereby congratulate Northeast Community College on its 40th anniversary and call upon all citizens to recognize the quality contributions that the college has provided to Norfolk and its 20-county service area and for its efforts in making this a better place to live, work, and learn. And I think we do have someone to accept this one?
Well, your applause is really applauding yourself on this one because you're the folks that rose up a college called Northeast Community College. I've been in the business 34 years in Nebraska community colleges, and I've had a wonderful opportunity to be a servant of the community college and to help others establish what their opportunities are for their lives. And certainly, thank you for the proclamation, President Faust. Certainly give my appreciation to Mayor Fugman as well, and council members, thank you very much. We appreciate the Norfolk support, especially Norfolk support over the years, and how many of you are really Norfolk residents of many, many years? As I look across this audience, I think all of you are. But you know, over the past four decades since 1973, Northeast Community College has energized itself as the merger between what was known in 1928 as Norfolk Junior College and transformed itself based on the leadership on the board and especially on the support of Norfolk, especially and the city council in particular. You know, it's really interesting about this place called Norfolk Junior College, and as we celebrate our 40th, we're drawn to the history. I think Jim has shared with you at least our 40-year history a little bit. If he hasn't, he'll make sure to give you a book where you can at least look at the pictures and maybe if you're real interested, read that narrative. But you know, it's grown in 73 from four buildings of 1,000 students to 22,000 students on 860 acres and 27 facilities or buildings. If you've been out there recently, we're growing it again. It's an amazing place. Many people have asked me, "How would I rank Northeast Community College as I serve on national and international boards?" And I, the ranking in Northeast, I would say are in the top five of the rural community colleges in America. I would put them right up against the top five in the nation for rural community colleges. It's that good. I think a lot of people don't understand what we have out there in total, or really, frankly, what we owe you for helping us create that. Northeast is a very forward-looking institution. It's on the move again to develop to its next level. We're big into workforce and economic development with our new Center for Enterprise. We're looking at that to be able to even develop a stronger marriage with our business and industries. We're working very hard on that. And one testament in closing, one of the testaments in particular is the Lifelong Learning Center. How many of you have actually attended or attended a course or participated in an event at the Lifelong Learning Center? And I would say it's 100 percent of you and probably the audience behind me. That's just one example of how we bring together the partnerships of various entities to be able to bring together a tremendous educational opportunity for all of us, not just for the students that sometimes we just think about. So in closing, a special thank you to all of you. You've all played a role, played a part, even if it's just as a taxpayer, even as being a city council member, working with Shane, and just in my last 18 months, has been a tremendous experience of working with people the caliber of Shane and his staff to be able to create what we've created out here on 801 East Benjamin. So with that, thank you. We will continue to drive this institution forward with your help, with your participation, with your involvement in this college. In closing, the last thing is that it is your community college. A lot of colleges speak to that, but I'm here to tell you that it is your community college. "Community" is in the name on purpose, and it's to stay there, and the issue that we're here to serve you. And so congratulations for you. Thank you for the proclamation, Mr. President, and we appreciate what you do for us. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I do want to add that you are a great partner. We've done a lot of things with the college, the city has worked, and with your council, meeting with the county and us board and stuff, that I think you're only getting stronger and moving ahead further than you are, and you are a visionary. So I appreciate it, and we appreciate it. So thank you very much. All right, the last proclamation I have for International Alpha Delta Kappa Month, whereas women in education constitute a great portion of the nation's working force and are constantly striving to serve their community as a nation in educational, cultural, and charitable programs, leading to harmony, happiness, and peace among all people, and now therefore I, Dave Faust, Council President of the city of Norfolk, do hereby proclaim the month of October, 2013, as International Alpha Delta Kappa Month in Norfolk and the surrounding area, and call upon all citizens to visit friends and loved ones who reside at these facilities and also to learn more about assisted living services and how they benefit our seniors. Is there anyone present for that one? I want to congratulate all the people who got a proclamation tonight, all of you helped Norfolk and make Norfolk the strong strength town that Dennis was talking about. So we appreciate all your help. Thank you. All right, moving on, we're going to open a public hearing. We have one more. We have the city staff who wants to comment on some project updates. First, we're going to have the Michigan Avenue, 20th, 18th Street. Mark's going to address that.
Good evening, guys. Just wanted to give you my status update on our various street projects. I think it's been three weeks since I last updated you, and we've had a lot going on the last few weeks, if you've noticed. Street pavement is complete on Michigan Avenue. That's the street concrete pavement, but that part is complete. All the returns and tie-ins are complete, but we still have driveways, sidewalks, a lot of other miscellaneous items. If you noticed, or over the weekend and last Friday, they started working on some driveways and sidewalks, and as they work through those, they're going to let people into their driveways slowly but surely. They were trying to focus on that area between 11th and Southern where those five or six houses really didn't have access, so they're focusing on that and working with them to get access to their homes. But like I said, sidewalks and driveways, grading and saw are the main items left. Talked to the contractor this morning. He's estimating that they should be done and out of there about the end of the month. Is there hopeful time for completion on that project? So hopefully by the end of the month, we'll have it opened up to traffic. So any questions on Michigan Avenue?
I don't have any questions, but I have had a lot of calls from the trick-or-treaters that are going to be going down those sidewalks, and they said, "You should get them done by the 31st, or there will be some people showing up at your house with little goblin masks on," so.
Okay. I didn't think about that, but hopefully they should be done by then.
All right.
Next project is going to just update you on is 20th Street. If you notice, it's the last time, I think it was before you guys, we moved on from phase one to phase two of that project, and that phase is basically from the Times Square Event Center to Parker Circle, and that's where we had to do some storm sewer. The storm sewer is in, and all that work is complete. Elkhorn paving is also the same contract on Michigan Avenue. They're going to have both their crews on Michigan Avenue this week, so you're not going to see much happen on 20th Street, but the next week they're going to start removals and subgrade work on 20th Street on that main stretch, and then follow the week of the 21st to the 25th is their goal for paving that phase two. So again, roughly about the first of November is going to be the next phase change for that project, and that next phase is just from Parker Circle north to about 150 feet or so. So that's 20th Street. Again, not much, you're not going to see much happen this week because they're trying to put both crews on Michigan to get that going and then jump, put one of their crews back over on 20th. Any questions on 20th? All right, final project I'm going to update you on is the Sunset Circle on 18th Street. If you know, I'm sure most people have noticed that 18th Street got reopened south of the roundabout. Right now, TDK is working on Sunset Circle, which is just a block south of Madison, west of 22nd. Is that roundabout there? That's where they're working on now. They're anticipating that they got about two to maybe three weeks to get that totally complete because they have to do all that handwork and pour the street and then come back and do drives. They will be moving back to 18th Street to where we have some patchwork, some panel replacement, north of the Passau Roundabout, as they are going to jump back and forth between Sunset as they have cure time and stuff for those two projects. So there will be some construction on 18th Street. However, our plan right now is to maintain traffic on 18th Street. However, there will be some barricades that, you know, folks have to be cautious about, but our plan is to maintain traffic. So any questions there? All right?
Thank you. And now, city staff is going to update us on SID of Stanton County. Shane, are you going to address that?
Yes, sir. Your Honor and council, I didn't have a large update for you, but until Friday, we did get some correspondence from Woodland Park, and I then put together this written update that I passed out to you for your review this evening. As you recall, May 1st, we sent a letter from the city to the SID advising them that they need to prepare plans and move forward with their own sewer, sewer instruments, and to conduct a review out there and give us intent and progress reports beginning June 1st. We haven't received any correspondence from the SID number one, Woodland Park, since then until Friday. As you can see in the information I handed out, June 1st came and went. That was our first quarterly report. We did have a meeting that was called with NDQ and the SID number one, the city of Norfolk, on June 24th. July 1st through the 31st, we didn't have any communication. August 1st through the 31st, no communication. And September 1st, the second quarterly report came and went, so we didn't have any quarterly report there as well. On the 23rd, city staff met internally just to discuss the situation, update ourselves internally to try to continue to prepare for the eventuality of Woodland Park disconnecting from the city of Norfolk sewer. At that meeting with city staff, we called NDQ and visited with their staff and just advised them that we hadn't got any progress reports from SID number one. They took that under advisement, and it appears then on September 24th that NDQ personnel called Mr. George Bryant from Bryant Engineering to inquire about the progress reports from SID number one. You can see that in your packet. I did have a copy made of email from Mr. Charles Derschner of the NDQ outlining what the conversation was about with Mr. Bryant, the engineer that's working with SID number one. It appears from this email that the engineer told NDQ that he had submitted a proposal to the SID board for him to prepare a facility plan. However, according to this email, the SID board has not signed a contract with him at this time. However, thought the facility plan, if the contract was signed, could be completed in several months, and he also mentioned that a section of sewer pipe along Highway 35 that they were, they found deficiencies in and they were planning to repair. On October 3rd, we went ahead then and placed this update in front of, on the city council agenda, and then Friday, October 4th, we received a progress report from Bryant Engineering. That's attached as well to Dennis', and it, I'll highlight the progress report here. This letter is a progress report of SID's efforts to implement the requirements outlined in the June 6th letter to the SID from Stephen Goans of the NDQ. SID informed George, apparently, that Johnson Services has completed the sewer TV inspection of the project. I don't know to what extent, if that's 100 percent or not, but I'm hoping that it's 100 percent. Also, SID has engaged Bryant Engineering in short Elliot Hendrickson to prepare a preliminary engineering report or facilities plan, and that's what we've been asking for from SID number one. So that hopefully continues down that path. And then they asked for a number of things here, 13 things, that potentially we could get from the city of Norfolk as Dennis and his staff reach through that really. Most of these things are, can be covered in our sewer master plan, so we intend to send them the sewer master plan that we have available to us. It also states in this document that anticipated completion of the facility plan to be the first week in November, which is only three weeks away, which I hope that remains the case. That would be wonderful. So that's the update from the city staff's perspective from Woodland Park and the sewer situation at Woodland Park. Be happy to answer any questions or take any further instruction from the mayor and council as to our engagement or lack thereof with SID number one. I would remind the council that in the letter that you instructed me to send on May 1st, that part of that letter talked about if our progress reports are not received in a timely manner, city of Norfolk city officials will reassess and may move up the disconnect date. So I just remind you of that because I'm not sure what that all means. I hope this is a sign of progress now that we got this progress report as of Friday. Obviously, you wanted to turn around some of that information today when we just got the report on Friday, so that probably, that didn't happen today. We'll continue to keep an open mind and an open-door policy as far as staff's engagement with Woodland Park, but from my perspective, the ball is squarely in their court, and they need to move forward with their plans as the mayor and council advise them to do in May.
Shane, on that section of the pipe on Highway 35?
Yeah.
Were there any specifics as to what they found? Or do you anticipate getting any specifics on what the repairs were?
Do you have any specifics, Dennis, of what they found exactly?
We don't have any specifics as to what we found. When we reviewed their, the minutes of their last meeting, which I believe was 3rd Monday in September, there was an item talking about the contract for the facilities report and also for doing that work on the highway. So we've requested, or made a written request, asking for all information related to the contract information for their facilities plan and also for a videotape of that sewer line section along Highway 35 so we could see what they are seeing there. I'll reserve my speculation as to what may be going on there until I see some pictures.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I do know that they've just had an election out there, and they have a lot of new board members, so I would urge them to get ahold of Shane if they have some interest in talking about this and maybe having a meeting with him to get up to speed or to tell Shane what their next actions might be. So maybe the new board will reach out and we'll be able to talk to them here shortly.
That'd be very much welcome.
Anybody have anything else? All right, let's move on to a public hearing. We'll have a public hearing for the mayor and city council to sit as a board of equalization to levy special assessments in an amount of $522.57 against a property at 1114 Pierce Street for mowing, litter removal, and other maintenance charges. I'd like to have a motion to adjourn as the mayor and city council convene as a board of equalization.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second, and we'll have a roll call.
All council members voting in the affirmative.
Now we'll have discussion on the board of equalization. Beth?
This is a normal way of assessing mowing charges against a property when the property owner does not do the work by themselves. The health official notified the property owner by certified mail prior to completion of the work. When the property owner did not respond, the work was completed at the owner's expense. The city billed the property owner and mailed notice by certified mail of the public hearing to levy the special assessment. If the resolution is adopted by the elected officials, then it is sent down to the county and filed against the property, much as a special assessment, a regular special assessment would be, and interest does accrue against that amount as well. The property location, as mentioned, is 1114 Pierce Street, and the amount of the assessment is $522.57.
Does anyone have any questions or comments?
Beth, you know, is this the first action we've had on this property, or have we had it before this also?
This one, I believe, is the first one, under that name at least. I think that's the same one at that, first one at that address as well.
Thank you.
Anybody from the audience? I'd like to close this hearing as a board of equalization and resume as a city council. Can I have a motion?
Move that way, close the hearing, and.
Second.
Please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative.
All right, now we're going to have consideration of Resolution 2013-37, levying a special assessment in the amount of $522.57 against property located at 1114 Pierce Street for mowing and removal of weeds and incidental litter.
I'll introduce Resolution 2013-37.
Second.
And Beth will address this again.
This would be the resolution that actually implements the special assessment that gets the property at 1114 Pierce Street.
Does anybody have any questions, any comments? Please vote.
All councilmen voting in the affirmative. Resolution 2013-37 is adopted.
We'll now have a public hearing and discussion of the acquisition by the city of Norfolk of property for the Southwest Water Transmission Main Project generally located along Omaha Avenue, 25th Street, and the extension of Monroe Avenue in or near Norfolk. Do we have a motion? We have a motion. Okay. So we'll have discussion by Dennis?
Yes. We're working on a water transmission line from the West Water Treatment Plant, goes diagonal across the city's property down to Omaha Avenue, then follows Omaha Avenue from about 37th Street to 25th Street, south on 25th Street to.
from about 37th Street to 25th Street, south on 25th Street to what would be the extension of Monroe Avenue, and then back east over to about Deets Furniture. Section 18-1755 requires that a public hearing be held anytime the city is acquiring any property. That's what we're doing with this public hearing tonight. I have at least one property owner that, as opposed to an easement, prefers that the city just buy the property, which is precipitating this, this public hearing. I'm still dealing with a couple of other property owners along the way, so I'm not sure whether those will be easements or property acquisition, but we're doing a public hearing along the entire route so that we will be covered, whatever action route we come forward with those easements. So I believe probably by the end of the week, I may have verbal approval from all of the folks along the route. So we're making progress. Answer any specific questions?
Any questions for Dennis?
Once you get that, that's when we're ready then to go out for bids on it then.
We have, we have bids on this project and we have the contractor going to start work here probably by the end of the month for sure, maybe in the next two weeks. So he ain't going to be working, he'll work as long as he can and finish up in the spring. So it's Penro that has the job.
Any other questions? I'd like to close the public hearing at this time then. And let's move on to item 37 in the regular agenda. Consideration of Approval of Real Estate Purchase Agreement between Brian Takey, Wendy Takey, Trevor Rasmussen, and Stephanie Rasmussen and the City for the purchase of property for construction and maintenance of a water transmission main in the southwest part of Norfolk for an amount of $35,000. Can I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Dennis?
This is the piece of property needed for this water transmission line. It's immediately off the end of the paving at 16th and Madison Avenue, or Monroe Avenue, extends straight west over to the railroad tracks. The tract is about 4.1 or 2 acres. It'll serve for the, this water transmission line. Ultimately, we've designed this so there may be a sewer collection line going down the other side of the, of the street, so to speak, and then the property would be reserved so that it could be used for future street should anything ever develop that we would need a, a street through there. This piece of property is probably about, the only part of that property that's really very developable because most of it's in the floodway. So this is about $83 or $400 an acre, so I think it's pretty reasonably priced for the, for the property.
Dennis, how far does that extend? I mean, if you were to extend like 25th Street or 18th Street or?
This one goes over the railroad tracks.
Okay.
And that's about 20th Street roughly, so 16th to 20th Street thereabouts, so.
Does anybody else have any more questions? If not, let's take a roll call.
All council persons voting in the affirmative.
All right, moving on, consideration of Ordinance Number 5269, amending Section 24-165.1 of the Official City Code to remove a 15-minute parking stall in front of 127 South 6th Street.
I've moved consideration of Ordinance 5269.
You have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion, Bill?
Council President, members of the council, we received a request from the business that the stall is in front of saying that they were the only ones on the block that had any need, but they long since no longer needed it and were requesting if they could just have it removed. And so we told them that that was fine with us and so it's really more of a, kind of a housekeeping matter at the request of the business that it's in front of there. So a good request that you would go ahead and approve this.
Thank you. Any other discussion or questions for Chief? We'd have the short title then.
An ordinance of the city of Norfolk, Nebraska to amend Section 24-165.1 of the Official City Code to remove a 15-minute parking stall in front of 127 South 6th Street to provide when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect and to provide for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative. Ordinance 5269 carries on first reading.
Your Honor, as this is, as Chief noted, more of a housekeeping situation than anything else, I would recommend that we suspend the rules and pass this on second and third.
Second. We have a motion and a second to suspend. Please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative. Ordinance 5269 carries on second and third.
All right, consideration of Approval of Ordinance 5270, vacating the east-west alley adjacent to lots A and B, Block 1, of Rulo's and Bussi's addition to the city of Norfolk, and tax lot four in the southwest quarter of the southwest quarter of the Section 23, Township 24, north range one, west of the 6th PM, all in Madison County, Nebraska. Can I have a motion?
I've moved consideration of Ordinance 5270, first reading.
Second.
Dennis?
This alley is just north of Norfolk Avenue and it extends from Cottonwood West to the river. Al Regie Husker Investment Group owns the properties there, has done some redevelopment and is looking to continue that, has requested that the alley be vacated. We've contacted all the utility companies, or they have contacted all the utility companies and, and nobody has any utilities in that alley and all would, are agreeable to have it vacated. One less piece of alley that has to be maintained if somebody decides that they want an open alley, so would recommend approval.
All right. Any discussion, council?
Dennis, is this a north, north-south alley?
It's an east-west alley.
East-west, so it's just the extension of Roche?
No, actually, it's not that far north. There's a, there's an alley just behind the car dealership there and would, it's never been, well, shouldn't say never, to the best of my knowledge, it hasn't been opened. It may have been, I'm not even sure that the access for the motel got that far north. So it just would have gone right on the north side of, or south side of that house that got tore out of there, so. Got the parking lot there and I think that Al is looking at some dividing or reconfiguring the lots to the north of there. Not sure what he has in mind, but.
Yeah, I wasn't familiar with any alleys on that side, but I see the drawings, so. Or vacate in an alley that's never been there.
Basically, and you know, like I said, it's one less piece of property that you have to maintain if somebody decides that they want a alley open, so.
Any other questions or discussion? We'll have the short title.
An ordinance of the city of Norfolk, Nebraska to vacate the east-west alley adjacent to lots A and B, Block 1, of Rulo's and Bussi's addition to the city of Norfolk, and tax lot four in the southwest quarter of the southwest quarter of Section 23, Township 24, north range one, west of the 6th PM, all in Madison County, Nebraska, to provide when, that the real property comprising said lot revert to the owners of the adjacent real property, abutting thereto pursuant to Section 16-611, NRS 1943, reissue 2007 as amended, to provide for release of utility easements, to provide when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect, and to provide for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Could you please vote?
All council members voting in the affirmative. Ordinance 5270 carries on first reading.
As this doesn't seem controversial and the same property owner owns both sides of the alley, I would move that we pass Ordinance Number 5270 on second and third.
Second.
A motion and a second to pass on second and third and suspend the rules. Please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative. Ordinance 5270 carries on second and third.
All right, now we're going to combine, just for Shane's talking, 41 and 42, but we're going to talk about the second street, stoplights first, and then we'll go to the third street. But if you have any questions, we can address on either one. Consideration of Resolution, I skipped one, sorry about that. Then we'll go on to the stoplights. Consideration of Ordinance 5271, amending Section 24-150 of the City Code to remove language rendered unnecessary due to the recent changes in fine amounts. The reason I skipped that one was I was going to give Clint the rest of the evening to speak on that.
Mr. President, I'd offer consideration of Ordinance Number 5271.
Second.
Motion and a second. Do we have any discussion? Clint?
This is really a housekeeping item. We should have caught this when we, when the fine amounts were all increased to $25. This was kind of left over. You remember, a number of years ago, there were some, some folks that were signing their own privately owned parking lots. They didn't think $10 fine was enough and so we had added P in there that said that if they clearly stated on the signs that they were, it was a $25 fine, it could be a $25 fine. It's no longer needed since everything's a $25 fine, so it truly is a housekeeping matter.
Any other discussion, any questions for Clint? We'll have the short title.
An ordinance of the city of Norfolk, Nebraska to amend Section 24-150 of the Official City Code to remove language rendered unnecessary due to recent changes in fine amounts, to provide when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect, and to provide for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative. Ordinance 5271 carries on first reading.
Mr. President, as this is noted more as a housekeeping situation, I would move that we suspend the rules and pass Ordinance 5271 on second and third reading.
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules. Is there any discussion? Please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative. Ordinance 5271 carries on second and third.
Now, we're going to go to Resolution 2013-38 related to the stoplight located at the intersection of Second Street and Norfolk Avenue. We're going to look for Shane, but we're also going to include discussion on the next item. So if you have any questions on either one, ask now.
I'll introduce Resolution 2013-38.
Second.
We have a motion and a second? We'll have discussion now?
How do you give your two cents in if you're talking about the stoplight?
Right now, we can have you talk.
I'm sorry to do that. I don't hear where, well, I don't know where you're at. But I definitely.
Could you, could you come up to the mic? Yep? Just take your time.
I am.
Okay.
If you're talking about either one or none or whatever, I definitely think you need one more in the heart of town because after school, you have cars on 4th Street that it's a mess. I've seen a number of times, even when the other, one other light was working, that it just piled up. They're coming from the south and they're coming from the north. The ones coming from the south have the right of way if somebody wants to turn and go to Hy-Vee. And I've seen people sit through four or five stoplights because it can't turn and your traffic's packed up all the way to Norfolk Avenue and sometimes it's packed up on the other side of the other light. And I kind of think, I'm not very good at this, but I kind of think if you just had the one to the east at least operating, it would take some of the pressure off because at school time, that's a mess. And I have another thing about people getting across, that's the heart of town. Leave first and then second, leave it out, third, fourth, fifth, and then leave sixth out. But those three in the middle, and that's, everybody parks there, everybody's uptown, anybody that is going to be, and if you're trying to, if me trying to go across for the light or get to a light so you can go across, it's kind of a madhouse. And I know a lot of people just go in the middle if nobody's coming, but the way it is now, that traffic's pretty thorough and from 4th Street to 1st Street, anybody pays any attention, people pick up their speed a little bit to get to 1st before that light changes.
Yep.
I'm sorry, but.
No, you're right. We've, and we've.
It's none of my business to some extent. I don't live uptown, but I come uptown.
Yep. And we've heard some comments like that, so you're not the only one.
That's not me, I came to.
Yeah. Could you please give us your name and address for the record?
You know where I live?
I do.
I'm Philistuttle. I live at 1102 North 9th, which is not on the map in the book.
We might have to fix that too.
If you look in your phone book, that part of North 9th is not in there, at least it didn't used to be.
Okay. Could you please sign that paper there too, so we know you've been here?
Oh, you guys are going to have me sign that?
Yes, we are. And we have had a lot of comments about the traffic and the flow, so we appreciate you coming.
I don't care personally, but somebody's going to get hurt or there's going to be a little bit of a problem.
Yep. No, I appreciate that. Thank you. Does anybody else want to speak or we'll let Shane talk first and then anybody else can speak?
Yes, Your Honor.
Thank you, ma'am.
As you seen on your, as you see on your agenda, you have two resolutions, each has a version A and a version B of the resolution for your consideration, which basically allows you to do one of three things, I assume. You can, you're going to act independently on 3rd Street, you're going to act independently on 2nd Street. So the options are going to be, leave them as it is with the stop signs and the tramples out, take, take the standards down and leave the traffic flow as it is now. As you recall from the testimony before, the facts of the testimony, it doesn't meet the warrants involved, but we make a lot of decisions based on a lot of things other than the warrants. So that's one option. The second option would be to completely upgrade both signals, which started this whole conversation, spend the dollars and upgrade the signals for 3rd Street and 2nd Street and move on from there. I guess the third option would be to upgrade one signal and not the other. Now, from staff's perspective, that option has some value and some credence to it as well, if you want to strike some sort of compromise in between the two. 2nd Street in particular doesn't see the amount of traffic nearly as much as 3rd Street and neither intersection meets the warrants. So that has some plausibility to it if you look strictly at the facts of the matter. With the new upgrade, we'd be able to put in timing, timings, additional timing sensors into the 3rd Street or 2nd Street intersection or both to adjust those timing patterns and the traffic flow down there if you wish to create the, the backing out effect that we've heard about from testimony a few weeks ago and letters and whatnot to, to the mayor and council. So we could accomplish that and we could still have one intersection in play and one out, which saving us some dollars long-term. So that's an option for you to consider. With that being said, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have. I know there's, we've taken a lot of testimony, a lot of input on both sides of this matter. It's kind of a question between the travel in public sometimes and the downtown business district and what we're trying to accomplish downtown in our business district or the downtown district. So I know there's some passionate folks about that as well, so you know, it's, it's kind of a difficult situation, I'm sure. But with that being said, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have from staff's perspective. I would add, if the council chooses to upgrade one or both of those intersections, that staff's intentions are to. We haven't done it, we haven't purchased the upgrade, trying to anticipate what you're going to do. We, we would order the upgrade, the, the equipment to get the upgrade installed, that'll take us about five or six weeks, then troubleshoot it, install it, and hopefully it'll take off and fly. I wouldn't recommend us going forward and trying to turn the old stuff back on, I'm not sure if it's going to turn on, and then five or six weeks later, shut it back down, troubleshoot the new stuff, and then turn it back on. I think that'd be counterproductive in my, in my opinion anyway. So that would be our intentions if you, if you choose to upgrade one or both of those intersections.
Shane, are we in a position, with the work already being done downtown, I know we probably don't have a contract with these two intersections, but just for smoothness, can they, can they start wiring? can they, can they start wiring stuff ahead of time? I mean, they're already here wiring.
They are.
Lights downtown.
They're here wiring other.
Can they start the process?
You know, we could ask that question. I anticipate the answer being probably not, because they have a work order in place, and, you know, those crews move, you know, they do these jobs, and then they move on, and then if they have another work order, they would come back, so we could inquire about that, Councilman, if you'd like us to.
I, I just wonder about, since they're already here, it'd be a cost savings for them, I would, I would imagine, and then we would just have to wait for the controllers and stuff that we have to install, but the wire and stuff could be pulled.
Perhaps. We can inquire into that if you'd like us to.
I guess, you know, my comments at the last meeting, I see a very strong sentiment from the downtown folks that they want these lights reinstalled, and the other communication I get is about 50/50. I was at a meeting last week, and Councilman Moaning solicited the group of about 40 people, and I was kind of surprised to see there was only three or four, that was four lights being hooked back up overwhelmingly to leave them the way they are. The one thing that concerns me a little bit is the comments that I've heard a couple times, that, "Don't you guys have more important things to worry about?" And I tend to approach every decision that we make up here as important, because I know that it's important to somebody, or else it wouldn't be on our desk, so I discount that, that sentiment from some folks, that, "Don't you have something more important to worry about?", because it is important, it's important to a lot of people in town, and if it's important to one person, then it's important to me, and I think everyone on this board would echo that same sentiment. So, I guess that's, that's all I wanted to say.
Anyone else have any comments? I know at the last meeting, some of the downtown merchants were here, and they were for us to put the lights back in to, to break up that flow of traffic. Other people commented, "It's easier to fly through town if we don't have the stoplights", but those are the people who probably aren't stopping downtown, so it is, I, I do hear some 50/50, but in a safety reason, it might be safer to have, at least on that Third Street where that dance studio is, I've heard a lot of comments that that's pretty dangerous. So, you, we can look at them, we're going to look at Second Street first and then Third Street, but we can change them around, so keep that in mind, but, but Dale, we'll, we'll need a motion on whether you want A or B, so we reinstate them or, or remove them?
And something I wanted to add also is, is I think that, I think that the removal of the lights have brought to light, that that is an unsafe situation at the dance studio, whether the lights are there or not, I think that's an unsafe situation. When we used to have our meetings at 7:30, I avoided that intersection just because of that, kids cutting through parked cars and through lanes of traffic to get to their mom and dad's car, it just scares me to death.
It is very dangerous.
So, whether the light's there or not, that's something that I hope that we could partner with the dance studio and maybe find an alternative, a safer alternative. I think the new parking plan's going to address that to some, in some regard, because they'll have designated parking in the parking lots for the help at that business, but that's one thing that's came to light, I think that's a positive from this. And also, I want to commend, commend the workers that came up with this idea. I think it's thinking outside the box, and I think the decision that we make tonight, in my mind, we're just going to pass this on, because these controllers are going to be outdated in another 15 to 20 years, and the council sitting here is probably going to be poised with this same question, and it's going to be considerably more expensive, I'm guessing, than it is today, so. I, I just think that, keep looking outside the box and working with the downtown folks. I think that there's other, there are other ways that we could accomplish this and still address the issues of line-of-side issues at the corners and the intermittent spaces for people to back out of the parking places, but I just wanted to, to let people know that I appreciate the city workers that came up with this idea of thinking outside the box, because that's money that could be spent other places that we need to spend money.
Thank you.
But I, I guess with that, or if someone else has.
Yeah, Your Honor, I just want to say that I think we've had a good, long trial period on this issue, and I think the community's ready for some resolution, and with that, with the options presented to us, I will speak in support of version A of the next, of this resolution and the next, to reinstate the lights. We have received a lot of contact, the majority of the contact I've received has been in support of putting the lights back on, and the number one issue has been pedestrian safety. We've invested a lot in our downtown to make it customer-friendly and pedestrian-friendly, and I, I think we need to make that the paramount issue here. The way things are, I think that pedestrians are, face a lot of uncertainty with the current arrangement, and are in somewhat of a no-man's-land crossing at those intersections, so I will support reinstating traffic, the, the signals in both intersections.
Anyone else?
I guess I will second version A of this resolution.
You want to make them that?
Well, Josh made the move.
The motion.
Motion. Nice second.
Second it? Okay. Can I do that, or does he have to do that? We're fine. Okay, so we are going to vote on Resolution A, which will reinstall the lights at Second Street. All right, please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative, version A passes.
Okay, now I'd like a consideration of Resolution 2013-39 related to the stoplight located at the intersection of Third Street and Norfolk Avenue, and Shane already talked about it, it's the same as Second Street. We can have more comments if you guys want to, we can have discussion. And I need a motion.
I'll make the motion for version A of Resolution 2013-39.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for Resolution 2013-39 to be A, to reinstate the stoplights. Can we have some discussion now? Does anybody have any other comments?
My only comment would be, if I may, Your Honor, to Councilman Moaning's point, again, I'd be remiss not to mention public safety being a key interest, but the only way we truly have public safety at intersections for the traveling public and the pedestrians is if we, both the pedestrians and the traveling public in their vehicles are aware of each other and account for each other with some serious attention to, to each other. So, I, you know, stoplights and crosswalks, and all those things are great and handy, but don't trust technology, only trust what you're seeing, and the other person, just, just pretend that they're not seeing you, so that's the only true, true way we get better public safety at any of those intersections, lights or, or no lights.
Yes, every, everybody has to pay attention, because a lot of people can blow through a stoplight or stop sign, and that's dangerous.
Absolutely.
So.
Well, I think the other thing that needs to be mentioned, and whoever's picking up young people down there, dropping them off, the urgency and the care that, the little bit of time that it takes to get out of your vehicle, and go get your child at that door, in lieu of sitting in your vehicle, being comfortable and waiting for your child to come darting in between another vehicle out into the lane of traffic, or crossing on a, on a stoplight, or crossing on a crossroad, I would think it would be paramount that I, as a, as a parent, would take that extra step to get out of the vehicle, go to them, but too often, we see it at school drop-offs and everything else, that we have to sit in our vehicles, waiting for our children to come running to our vehicle, which is a very unsafe situation.
Yes, just by putting in these stoplights isn't going to solve everything, but everybody does need to be more cautious in those areas, so.
I think Jim's comments kind of underscore the, the need to take another, further look at that area down there and see if there is something by ordinance we can't do to increase public safety.
Yeah, I agree, and, and the parking lots, like they said, are going to make a difference. If we can create more parking so they aren't out on the street, would help, so, but yeah, I would urge that we do look at other things, so that not just the stoplights are the reason, because it, it was dangerous before when we had the stoplights, but it's a little more dangerous possibly now, so.
I, I guess I'd have one more comment during this, the course of this discussion, there's been some speak in favor of the removal of the lights in terms of enhancing traffic flow along Norfolk Avenue, and in, in lieu of that, with the lights remaining on, there's also been questions about an adjustment of the timing of lights to help increase and enhance traffic flow. I don't know, maybe Dennis, if you'd have something to say to address that, whether that can lead to some kind of improvement, an adjustment in the, the timing of the lights to enhance traffic flow along Norfolk Avenue.
I think, kind of, I'll answer first, I guess. I, I think it depends on what your goal is for the traffic flow down there, Councilman. If you want to have true flow through the, you know, where you have, you hit greens going all the way through, or do you want to time those out so they stop at every intersection, those kind of things, we kind of got to answer as a community, too. You know, we can move, move the timing of, especially with the new updated equipment, we can move the timing of those signals where they, where they cycle, to accommodate a lot of, a lot of those kind of flow issues if we choose to. So, I guess, do you have a particular, particular?
I don't necessarily, I don't know that we need to get in the weeds of the specifics right now, but it, it did come up as a, as perhaps an alternative, if both lights do come up, a solution to enhancing the flow of traffic, and possibly being to make an adjustment of the timing of the lights.
One thing, you know, we could do is we could stretch the, the cycle on the green light that's on the east and westbound traffic, to accommodate the flow of the traffic, but yet recognize the pedestrians by the pedestrian activation, so it would cycle for them when they want to cross for the dance studio or whatever, to any of the businesses downtown, but then, you know, the cycle for the green light east and west would be longer than, than maybe traditionally it could be, you'd have, help enhance some of that flow downtown, but yet have a cycle where you'd have a ability for, for folks to back out and, and do those kind of things. So, it's kind of a split in between there a little bit, Councilman, I think that is doable.
Okay, thank you.
I think one other thing, too, that we do want to remember, just a block off on Brash and a block the other way on Madison gives you that four-block freeway, if you will, where there's no stop sign or stop light on both of those, so people can go a block off and go without stoplights till they hit the Fourth Street on either one of those, so that's something to think about, too, if you don't want to go down Norfolk and have to stop, you can go on one of the side streets, so it's just another alley, so. Anybody else have any more questions? We'll have a roll call.
All council members voting in the affirmative, version A, Resolution 2013-39 is adopted.
So, it looks like we're going to have stoplights on second and third, so you'll be safe.
I was only worried about third.
Okay, well, we're going to do both.
That's fine.
All right, thank you. All right, now we'll have consideration of approval of an agreement with Kim Redens doing business as Northeast Nebraska Funding Akure, allowing the use of Skyview Lake or Park to hold a fundraising event for juvenile diabetes research on Saturday, October 12, 2013. Could I please have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
A motion and a second. Gary, you going to visit with us, and Gary just left? Does anybody else? Clint? Or Shane?
Clint, I'm not, I'm, don't know much about that.
This is really nothing out of the ordinary, the reason that it's on the regular agenda is that the request didn't come until after the agenda had been sent out last week, and so that's why it's on the regular agenda. There's really nothing, nothing out of the ordinary with it, it's an event for this, this, this coming weekend.
All right. Does anybody have any questions? None heard? We'll have roll call.
All council members voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
The only thing I have is I want to congratulate our councilman who represented us at Oktoberfest, and hopefully he can carry on with his duties here, now that he's going to be busy touring with, with their events, so. Anybody else have anything for the, for the council? All right, we're adjourned.